Good evening and thank you for viewing the November 17th meeting of the Arcata City Council. The city council meeting is being held as a teleconference in response to local efforts to reduce the COVID-19 virus. New cases continue to be reported in Humboldt County. The city urges residents to get vaccinated as our best defense against the virus and the personal and economic impacts it has on our town. If you would like to, please join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city clerk please call roll?
Vice Mayor Goldstein? Here.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Council Mayor Atkins Salazar and Councilmember Watson are both absent.
Thank you. If you wish to make a comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are two ways to do so. One, if you are logged onto the Zoom meeting webinar, click Raise Your Hand when it's time for public comment on the item you wish to speak. The clerk will unmute you and you will have two minutes to comment. Two, you can also access the meeting by phone. Call the number at the bottom of your screen, enter the meeting ID also at the bottom of your screen, press *9 on your phone to raise your hand. When it is time for public comment, city staff will request you to unmute and you will be prompted to dial *6 on your phone. You will hear a prompt that will indicate your phone is unmuted and you will have two minutes to comment. Now we're going to move on to ceremonial matters. Will Councilmember Matthews please read our proclamation for Arcata Main Street's Season of Light and Wonder and Light?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Goldstein. The City of Arcata proclamation designating November 27th to December 31st, 2021, as a season of wonder and light in Arcata. Whereas Arcata Main Street and local businesses are coming together for the annual celebration of the holiday season, the season of wonder and light in the heart of Arcata, everyone is invited to enjoy holiday sights, sounds, and cheer throughout the month. And whereas Arcata Main Street's Small Business Saturday Event on Saturday, November 27th, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., shall include local business gift previews and promotion, a special editions farmer's market, an opportunity to add wishes to a tree that will be lit at 5:30 p.m., and other holiday cheer surprises. And whereas, Arcata Main Street will host an outdoor holiday Sunday art market series, November 28th through December 19th, featuring locally-made arts, craft, music, and holiday activities from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on 8th Street of the Arcata Plaza. And whereas, Arcata Main Street will feature businesses offering special events throughout the season of wonder and light, including Friday, December 10th Arts Arcata, with extended shopping hours, music, arts and craft vendors, and a wine, chocolate, and cheese event. And whereas, on Saturday, December 11th, Santa and Friends will tour the shopping center of Arcata on a vintage firetruck parade, beginning at the farmer's market at 12:00 p.m. to bring cheer to the children and families all across town. And local residents are encouraged to help make Arcata sparkle with the celebration of lights, starting in the evening. And whereas, Arcata Main Street encourages residents and visitors to patronize the local businesses supporting this community event series, enjoy the beautiful array of lights on the historic Arcata Plaza throughout the season to soak up Arcata's friendly, small-town holiday atmosphere, and choose Humboldt by trying local stores first in-person and online when it comes to holiday shopping. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the city council of the City of Arcata that November 27th through December 31st, 2021, is the season of wonder and light in Arcata. The council also wishes to recognize Arcata Main Street for its constant efforts to promote and enhance Arcata's identity, economy, and cultural spirit dated November 17th, 2021. Signed by Stacy Atkins Salazar, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Matthews, and thank you, Arcata Main Street. We are now going to move on to early oral communications. This is the 15-minute time period that is provided for people to address the council on matters not on tonight's agenda. At the conclusion of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Any requests that requires council action will be set by the council for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council at this time are limited to two minutes, and we can take up to seven speakers. Please raise your hand if you are on Zoom or press *9 if you are calling in by phone and wish to make a comment. Do we have any public comment?
We do. We'll start with caller user one. Go ahead.
Hi. Am I the one, user one?
You are, Joanne. Go ahead.
Hello? Okay, yeah. So it's Joanne McGretta McGary, and at this point in the meeting, I just want to acknowledge that I did receive emails from three of the council members in response to my emails to them, and I will be probably commenting or being asked to make public comment on a few items throughout the meeting. But I just wanted you to know that I appreciate your getting back to me, and I look forward to contributing more to the meeting. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
We do. Our next public comment is Richard Marks. Go ahead, Richard.
Yeah. Good evening, City Council for Arcata. My name is Richard Marks, and I'm a Regional Compliance Manager for the Construction Industry Force Account Council. We are a nonprofit organization that monitors agencies, public works, jobs, and I'm just here to introduce myself. It's a whole new Arcata council since the last time I came on. I might be speaking to an item later on this meeting, and I just thought I would introduce myself. Again, this is Richard Marks from the Construction Industry Force Account Council, and some of you might know me as a harbor commissioner for Humboldt Bay Harbor Recreation and Conservation District. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
See, no other public comment for early oral communications.
All right. Thank you all. Now we'll move on to the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. A, approve minutes of the city council meeting of November 3rd, 2021. B, bi-weekly report on general warrants. C, adopt resolution number 212-28, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata amending the class and pay resolution, management, mid-management, confidential, and appointed employees to reflect the new position, project, and grant manager. D, approve the purchase of two charging stations for electric buses and award a purchase contract to G.I.L.L.I.G. Corporation for a total of $119,534, including tax, freight, and a two-year extended warranty, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. E, adopt resolution number 212-30, authorizing submission of several United States Environmental Protection Agency-targeted Brownsfield Assessment Grant Program applications, and authorize the city manager to execute required documents. Is there any council member that would like to remove an item? Is there any member of the public or staff that requests an item be removed from the consent calendar?
We do have a request from the public. Go ahead, Joanne.
Yes, thanks. This is Joanne McGretta McGary again, and I am asking for item D on the electric vehicle purchase or bus purchase to be removed from consent calendar.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. And so then first you would just take a motion on the remainder of the consent, and then we'll go to item D.
Is there a motion for the remainder of the consent calendar excluding item D?
I move that we approve the consent calendar minus item D.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Oops, sorry. The motion passes, and now we can have a discussion about item D.
Joanne, did you have a specific question or comment on item D? Go ahead.
My comment is, yes, thank you. My comment is about these purchases of electric vehicles, which I applaud, but I also want it to be transparent at this point in time that much of the energy used to charge these electric vehicles that we are purchasing for the city are currently using fossil fuels to charge them. So my hope is that future purchases for charging stations and vehicle purchases will have renewable energy at locations to charge these vehicles with solar arrays hopefully over each charging station, et cetera. I just think it's really important that, yes, great that we're doing these actions, but it needs to be clear that we're still using fossil fuel energy for these electric vehicles, as far as I'm aware. So I just wanted to make sure that we are out loud recognizing this. Thank you.
Okay. This is City Manager Karen Deemer. Thank you for that comment, Joanne. I did just want to clarify a couple of things. First, for all of the city charging stations, we do, you're correct, we don't have onsite generation, but the city does opt up to 100% renewable electricity. So all of the electricity for all of our city operations is 100% renewable portfolio. These particular charging stations for our two electric buses will be installed at Humboldt Transit Authority, and Humboldt Transit Authority does have onsite solar generation. They did a sizable install in part to gear up for electrifying the fleet. So there will be onsite on this particular location and then 100% renewable here in Arcata. But thank you for that comment.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
Is there any further comment on this item or a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of two charging stations for electric buses and award a purchase contract to Gillig Corporation for a total of $119,534, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. And thank you, Karen, for that clarification.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. Now we are moving on to old business. We're, item A, adopt resolution number 212-26, adopting the Arcata Strategic Arts Plan and resolution number 212-27, designating Arcata Playhouse as the city's local art agency. Can we please have a staff report from Gillen Martin?
Yes. Hello, all. We are going to jump into our presentation. So hello, welcome. My name's Gillen, and I'm a program specialist in the Community Development Department. With me here this evening is Senior Planner Dilo Freitas, and we've both been the lead on the Arcata Strategic Arts Plan since we started in the same week in 2019 with the City of Arcata. It's really wonderful to be here with you all at the end of a process that represents so much time and energy and thought from Arcata's artists and community members, and we are entirely cognizant that you've seen two presentations on the development of this plan, so tonight we're going to speak to its meat, the needs we've heard from the community in terms of arts and culture, and the goals that we propose to address them. So we know you've seen this slide, but we are just going to ground in this to begin with to remind us why we're all here. So from the beginning of our planning process, we heard from all corners what the arts already do in Arcata to define and address our most essential community concerns. So I've thrown up here on the slide just a few of those that we heard from our community. So from this initial framing, we've planned through thinking how to support artists and art organizations already doing this work, and how can we ensure that they have the infrastructure to keep doing what they need to do?
So I'm going to take over here for just one slide and run us through the engagement before Gillen jumps into the goals. As Gillen said, we have been on a long road through tonight to the adoption of the plan and the re-upping of our relationship with Playhouse Arts as our local arts agency. Through the last couple of years, we have done interviews with all of the organizations and entities on this slide. If you want to learn more about some of the questions that we asked and direct quotes from these individuals, they are in the appendices to the plan, which are in your packet on page 122. So we have done not only these interviews, but a focus group, study session with the council and planning commission, a survey, a listening session, and all of these have brought us to three main core tenets of the plan which tie to our goals, which are Arcata's arts are highly valued, Arcata's artists are fairly compensated for the work that they do, and Arcata's arts and cultural life is equitable and accessible to all. Generally, the document before you tonight is unchanged from the previous presentation that you received in June, but we're just going to run you through the goals in a little bit more detail and then wrap up with what happens next.
So before I get into the medias four of this plan, six primary goals, we just want to ground in equity commitment as well. So while increasing equity in Arcata is not named as one of this plan's goals, we do believe it will be an outcome of the plan. We've heard of the work that arts and artists do in Arcata to identify and name inequity and facilitate conversation and change toward equity. So we believe that by supporting those actors in our city, we will be working towards greater equity. And in regard to, oh, and to ensure that this plan is staying accountable to that commitment, for each of the goals, there is an approach to equity included in the section. I also wanted to note here, this is in your staff report, but in regards to racial equity, this term does use the term black, indigenous, and person of color, BIPOC throughout. There is a note on language on page 12 of the plan that speaks to that. We've heard some criticism of this term as a love-some term for historically excluded racial groups. We choose to use it still after surveying stakeholders in racial equity in Arcata. We overwhelmingly received feedback that we should use the term. However, we will revisit that as we all know language and terminology change. So now I'm just going to move into our four primary goals and give you an overview of what we've heard in the vein of each and how we're thinking it through. So first, increasing arts in public spaces. We have heard that the primary opportunities to experience are free public arts, whether that be physical public arts like murals and sculptures, or arts events, spectacles of all sorts that Arcata is truly known for. Most of those opportunities are clustered around our plaza or downtown core. So this plan supports stretching those out to other reaches of our city to allow more residents' successful opportunities to experience them. Second here, just making more transparent and publicly available the processes for new public arts creation in the City of Arcata and ensuring that there is equitable review in those processes so that we are allowing a spectrum of people to contribute to the City of Arcata's public arts collection. And finally here, just widening accessibility to Arcata's arts and cultural life. So I'll point to see this quote on the slide here. Events should be free as often as possible. We want to underwrite and uplift those programs that provide transportation to events or that underwrite ticket costs and just support as many families and individuals as possible attending our arts and cultural events, trying to make them as least cost prohibitive as possible. Our second goal, expanding arts education. So we heard from stakeholders the benefits that the arts specifically have in early childhood and elementary education, everything from developing motor skills and problem-solving skills to social emotional intelligence. We also heard the importance of continuing those educational opportunities past our elementary arts education, so the benefits of lifelong learning in the arts and the benefits that arts education opportunities in Arcata have toward community connectivity and just health and wellness for all ages. So for this goal, summed up by the incredible HSU Art Ed Professor Jim Woglem, Arts for Everyone, All Ages Through Continuing Ed. So making visible and increasing arts programming opportunities within the Arcata community. Our third goal, supporting Arcata's artists. It's in our vision statement, compensate artists for the work we do, but we heard this really frequently, that in this region, artists are oftentimes asked to produce work for free or for exposure, and that they should be compensated for the work that they do. So this is in our vision statement, and as the City of Arcata, we are just setting this as a norm. Fifteen of the graphics that you'll see throughout the plan, we have paid artists to contribute to those pages in partnership with both the Sanctuary and Playhouse Arts. On the graphics credits pages, you can see the asterisks next to the ones that are original works for the plan. But yeah, just setting that norm as a city, we pay artists when they do work for us, and we encourage our partners to do the same. Second on this goal, we are all aware that housing in Arcata is expensive, and our city's limited creative sector economy makes it difficult to make a living as an artist in Arcata. So in this vein, we heard time and time again that what we need is affordable housing and studio space for artists, and there is language in our 2019 housing element toward affordable housing. So this plan just looks toward how we can make that actionable in the coming years and also gear zoning regulations, increase artist residencies, and just other actions that we can take to make it financially feasible to live and work as an artist in Arcata. And finally, on this goal, we've heard of the disconnect between artists and decision-makers in our region. So about the time that artists have to spend advocating for themselves and their industry, and just a feeling that they do not have a seat at the table in these conversations. So with Playhouse Arts in the role of local arts agency, we hope that the organization will function as an intermediary arts liaison between the city and artists, just increasing connectivity between artists and decision-makers, cutting down on time artists need to take advocating for themselves, navigating our city processes, and just generally facilitating a greater seat at the table for artists. And finally, in our four primary goals for this plan, connecting HSU and Arcata through the arts. So we've heard from students, specifically black and brown students in Arcata, that many are feeling unwelcome or unsafe in the Arcata community. Conversely, we've heard that many non-student community members are feeling disconnected from our university as an institution in Arcata. Furthermore, even though art is one of HSU's largest majors, many of our students are not seeing pathways to creative sector employment post-graduation, so resume or portfolio-building opportunities, internships that offer off-campus connections that could lead to post-graduation employment. We want to create these opportunities because with the classes we're graduating, we're seeing an annual loss of artistic talent from our region from HSU's art program. Also, thinking of arts in terms of physical transitions on and off-campus, so areas that may create unsafe walking conditions or just be marked by lack of adequate lighting, how can we use the arts to make that experience of transitioning from HSU into broader Arcata community pleasant, enjoyable, and beautiful? Also, in the vein of physical transitions, we've heard that many off-campus community members do not attend events on campus due to hills or parking or general accessibility concerns. So this plan is not only thinking about how to get students off-campus, but rather, how can we use the arts to facilitate greater cross-pollination between on and off-campus communities, and how can the city and HSU specifically partner better to promote events and to provide and plan for accessibility around them?
Okay. And as Gillen mentioned, our last two identified goals really are meant to provide support to the other four, which really speak to identified needs in Arcata's communities. So the last two are first, to use this plan as a tool to secure additional funding for the arts, which is definitely a need that we all have identified. And lastly, to continue to formalize the relationship between Playhouse Arts as our local arts agency and the city. And to clarify, they have been our local arts agency for about a decade, but with the new resolution tonight, we are continuing to formalize and specify the roles and responsibilities of each party in order to continue to achieve these identified plan goals in partnership. So we have these six goals, and this is our last slide. The question now is what comes next? And I think that Gillen and I are both very proud of this plan. I think we've done what we can to make sure it's representative of the community that we serve. It definitely identifies needs and offers some solutions, but it really is just one step in a chain of continuing to support the arts. And as a first step, we will be continuing to update our own internal processes to ensure that they're as equitable and transparent as possible. We have the revised Local Arts Agency Agreement before you tonight as well. But we also want to recognize that this is a different council than the council that originally directed this work, and we are in a very different situation than we were in 2019. We would love to hear what the council would like to become next, and also hear from hopefully members of the public who are in attendance tonight and are here to support this work. So thank you for supporting us and allowing us to work on this. Thank you also to all of our partners who dedicated a lot of time to bring this to fruition, and we are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much. That was really wonderful. Do we have any questions or comments from the council?
Thank you so much, Gillen and Dilo. I read this strategic arts plan with such gratitude for the councils that came before us, for everybody that participated in these surveys and meetings and all the partners that worked on this. It is really a remarkable thing. You know, as a mother of a child that is an artist, I really appreciate we're expanding arts and education. I really think that this is going to really help Arcata have a unifying theme as we move forward with our arts plan. I just, I'm really honored to be one of the council members here now that will hopefully pass this. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say also thank you in that I just, I feel great to have inherited such a wonderful plan, you know, forth by a previous council, and you know, definitely you guys said that you did want to hear feedback from us. I'm, you know, just very fully in support of this plan that you guys are putting forth. I know we talked a lot about with using ARPA funds for a lot of city beautification as well, and how that's going to just, I mean, help promote our economy and generate, you know, just more people out in our community, you know, spending money and enjoying the arts and keeping everything going as we're seeing people come back to more and more events. And then also this process of beautification, hopefully seeing, I mean, more art installations like we're seeing around, both with the schools. I always walk on the Bay Trail there, and there's the art from Rowood Coast Montessori. I have snapped a few pictures of their adorable otter illustrations to show people. And so just being able to enjoy both, you know, student art all the way up to professionally-done, you know, beautiful murals that we're seeing pop up all over town as well, really has, you know, I think provided something great for people to come back into our community, especially as events are opening up, more people are out in public and enjoying our, you know, spaces. So I think that is going to be a great place for us to start and, you know, be able to move forward with this plan. But just, I mean, Gillen and Dilo and everybody in community development and all of these diverse stakeholders that you guys have, you know, gotten together, I just really thank you for that because this plan is really, it's sound. I think it really reflects a lot of what our community wants and needs, and so just thank you guys all so much.
And I really appreciate the fact that we're all looking through this through the lens of equity and inclusion. It's just, it's just really wonderful. Thank you.
Yes, I absolutely agree with everything my fellow council member said. I'm so appreciative for all of the hard work you all are doing and this incredible plan. I think art is such an important part to a flourishing and healthy, happy community. So I'm just so excited to see this go forward and so, really just so appreciative for all of the hard work that's gone into this. So thank you so much. Do we have any members of the public that are waiting to comment on this item?
Yes. We'll start with Ken Hammack. Go ahead, when you can hear me. Ken, go ahead.
Hi, this is Ken Hammack, current Chair of the Arcata Chamber of Commerce. Gillen and Dilo, thank you for this. This is really a gift to the community and much needed, such an important part of the economy, the arts. And I was wondering, since the Polytechnic announcement and the expected growth that we're expecting, you know, is going to ensue, I wonder how the arts are going to play a role in kind of the next-generation design, sustainable designs, for example, housing, public spaces, just designing our own future. How can the artist community play a better role as we think through our, you know, what the future looks like?
Playhouse Arts, my guest Jackie, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. My internet cable, my internet connection is a bit wonky. I'm out here in Blue Lake, so if I become a robot, I'm not really a robot. I think that in terms of creative placemaking, the arts can play such a huge role in both the health, like you said, welfare, and economic development of our city, and I'm so excited that this plan has come together and has moved forward, and Gillen and Dilo and David, it's been a journey, and it's been a fabulous journey, and I really look forward to implementing some of those things that are in that plan and to augment things that are going on. The idea that we can push our boundaries outside both the Creamery District and the town center and look at what's going on in other areas of this amazing city, all the little parks that are ever little parks that are everywhere that the city has worked hard to have, and how arts can have an effect on that. Kids who can't take transportation to get to, you know, things in the summer, or how we can offer many more free events. So I think it really offers a huge opportunity for artists to be involved in housing as well, in housing discussions, even though that's fraught, as we know. But I think it's good to have those ability and those places for artists to come forward and speak. And so I think this plan really does that, and I'm very excited about it. I guess I could turn my, oh, I can't, can't turn my video on. I'm just a star. So thank you so much for all the work from all angles of the city and all the partners who stepped in. It's exciting, and I look forward to gathering billions of dollars into the city of Arcata from international, national, and state funds that are just itching to fund creative placemaking ventures. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, Gwyn, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Gwenevere Cristobal, and I am the new Operations Manager at Arcata Playhouse, as well as an Hsu alum from 2020, from the Theater Department. And I just wanted to voice how exciting it is to be stepping into Arcata as not a student anymore, just as a citizen of the county. And I just really love that you guys are pushing towards bridging that gap between the campus and the community on the outside. And I just wanted to say, you know, the inclusion aspect of it is, as well, being a queer, Filipino-inex identifying person is just very exciting. And I'm just very, I'm looking forward to seeing how the Strategic Arts Plan takes place. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have no more public comment. Do we have any final comments or a motion from the council?
I think it would be my honor to recommend that the City Council of the City of Arcata adopt Resolution Number 21226, Adopting the Arcata Strategic Arts Plan, and Resolution Number 212-27, Designating Arcata Playhouse as the City's Local Arts Agency.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. All right, let's, moving on to Item B, receive an update and provide direction on the City's American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, priority projects. Can we please have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to turn this over to our Environmental Services Director Emily Sinkhorn for the update tonight. I just did want to preface that there's no required action tonight, but we just wanted to have additional discussion if thoughts or if ideas were coming to the council direct. We wanted to make sure that we were vetting those, and just to give you an update on some of the projects and where we are. So go ahead, Director Sinkhorn.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to give an update on the City's priority projects for its American Rescue Plan Act allocation. So as a reminder, the council first discussed potential ARPA priority projects in about mid-August, and then on September 1st, the council reviewed and recommended selected priority projects that really met the eligibility criteria for allocation from the American Rescue Plan Act, and that also really furthered the goals of the council from this past year's goal setting. And so again, the intention of these one-time federal funds, so they're allocated to state, local, and tribal governments, and are really aimed at pandemic response, and then really building back a stronger, more equitable economy. And the City of Arcata's share of these funds is about 4.4 million. And we wanted to provide an update today on the progress of some of these priority projects, and also just some updates of staff research, and to get feedback from the council. So I'm going to share a screen real quick. Great. So the Environmental Services Department is giving this update as we've been furthering a number of these priority projects. And we'll also give a brief summary of all of the allocations the council recommended so far. So for this first project, the council really looked to the potential of continuing to support KUNA, a project of nonprofit Cooperation Humboldt, as they've been actively engaging community members and expanding grassroots networks within Valley West. And city staff and Cooperation Humboldt have drafted a draft memorandum of understanding, and we expect that final contract to be in place hopefully in next month. And this contract really builds, or in draft form, really built upon KUNA's strengths at engaging with the Spanish-speaking community in Valley West, also in putting on community events, being a partner with the City of Arcata in outreach and prioritization of projects in Valley West, and continuing their beautification efforts through their current Adopt a Park program at Carlson Park, and expanding those cleanup and beautification efforts throughout Valley West as well. So the next priority that the council had was really refunding staff positions that were frozen during the pandemic. And the city has been really active in recruitment during this time. For ARPA funds, one Parks Maintenance worker has been hired from these unfrozen positions, and staff have really focused on additional vacancies and have recently hired a number of new staff. In particular, another vacant Parks Maintenance Worker position, a Recreation Supervisor, the Wastewater Treatment Plant Operator, and working through the process of two new police officers. So we still have a number of vacancies that we are actively recruiting for. And the City Manager's Office has advanced an online application system through governmentjobs.com that we really hope can be able to reach even more qualified applicants. So for this next priority project, the council had really wanted to focus on economic recovery and focusing on beautifying the GNH Street downtown-Northtown neighborhood as a key business district within the city. And we were also looking at opportunities that we've heard as additional goals of better connecting the Hsu campus to downtown and Northtown Arcata. And so one idea for these efforts has been really to collaborate with Hsu on establishing a green and gold corridor on G Street, connecting Hsu to the plaza. And we're really looking at this being a collaboration with Hsu, and Hsu working on design for many elements, and City working on installation and collaboration on that. But some of these ideas include light pole banners, enhanced decorative crosswalks, really celebrating Hsu, and hopefully a renaming of the Polytechnic University. And so we're looking at aiming towards early in the new year to really celebrate, hopefully, the re-establishment of Hsu as a Polytechnic State University, and also with the, hopefully, opening of the campus store on the plaza as well. Another component, and is in your packet, was a draft letter as a component of outreach to GNH Street property owners and businesses, really letting adjacent businesses and property owners know about the city and Hsu's collaborative efforts at beautification and inviting participation, and offering, you know, opportunities to, again, celebrate this green and gold corridor along G Street. Consistent with our Arcata Strategic Arts Plan presentation just now, we really would have a suggestion to work on enhancing public art within this corridor, and really following new Arts Around Town guidelines established during the Arts and Culture Strategic Plan. And also looking at opportunities for murals and other opportunities for beautification. I'm also looking at infrastructure improvements, including reimagining the two in-street planters on H Street in the downtown area, beautifying the corner of H and Samoa Boulevard, and really enhancing the city side of the footbridge by 17th Street that connects to Hsu. And community art collaborations have already really been focusing on the city side of this footbridge. So for additional updates, the Mobile Intervention Services Team, or MIST, is currently being supported by other grant funds. And when these grant funds sunset, the MIST team will continue to be supported by ARPA funds, and the city will continue to work towards hiring and funding a non-scorne prevention position. The Community Ambassador Program, a request for proposals to develop this program is currently, has been released and is currently on the city's website. The Safe Parking Program, the city manager has been giving updates to the council recurring at each meeting, and again, with the idea of providing individuals and families with vehicles of a safe place to park overnight as an opportunity to transition towards more permanent housing. The seventh priority project being support for Arcata House Partnership, a great partner of the city's, to really provide operational assistance and kind of bridge funding to really support their essential services. And that Community Development Department has been working on ensuring this bridge funding is, comes at a time when needed for Arcata House Partnership to continue their efforts. The City Council really recognized the essential work of essential staff serving during the pandemic, and with that, provided additional compensation for this recognition of working during these conditions of the pandemic. And so these essential worker recognition compensations were provided to our full-time employees, and is currently in process for eligible hourly staff for these eligible timeframes during the pandemic. City Council chamber upgrades have been completed to enable hybrid meetings. The council had really elected that it would be prudent to set aside an amount of funds for, to come back and look at in about 12 months, to really assess progress on these priorities and others of the council's key goals. And so the kind of 10th or on the sheet, 11th priority project of the council really hoped to focus an allocation of ARPA towards climate change adaptation measures. And in September, staff had said we would return to council with some ideas that really met the council's goals for climate change adaptation measures. And Environmental Services Deputy Director Emily Benve will provide an update on those ideas.
Thank you. Evening, Council. So city staff has been doing a lot of work to look into potential projects for consideration under the Climate Change Adaptation Measure line item, if you will. And while we have made a lot of progress, I will be really curious on council feedback for, of the options that we have come up with, which ones to continue to move forward with. So prefacing it in that space. One project that we have been moving forward has been completing an energy assessment report through Redwood Community Energy Authority, or Redwood Coast Energy Authority, for the Arcata Community Center. And that energy assessment report we recently received, and it included lighting, HVAC, including electrification of our HVAC system, commercial kitchen upgrades, and potential PV installation. And that report included a variety of measures within each of those umbrellas that could be selected individually or in combination, as well as a couple different financing options. And so if the city were to select every single option of that proposal, then the cost would be up to $243,000. Building off of that, there, as I mentioned, were a few different financing options, including no interest loans, one interest loan for a portion, some combination of out-of-pocket costs. So really digging into the specific financing structure to move forward with is one task that we're still working on. Additionally, we could work with RCEA to develop additional energy assessment reports for other city facilities. So we have identified a couple other potential locations that could be good fits. One of the reasons we went with Arcata Community Center is because there's a lot of community activity that happens in that space, and so it could potentially serve not only as a electrified city facility, but also potential demonstration option. And so in that vein, perhaps Food Works, for example, could be another space that we could look into. So there's that direction we can go in, which would be to continue to look into energy upgrades for city facilities. Another avenue we've been exploring is under the umbrella of implementing the Arcata's All Electric Initiative. And so this umbrella is quite broad. In the non-ARPA-funded space, city staff has been moving forward with development of a natural gas moratorium applicable to new construction. And the thought to dovetail that new construction potential moratorium would be to work on developing a appliance incentivization program. Specifically, we're looking toward heat pumps, but that could be further expanded. And we're also interested in looking into this potential program, financing program, really being for low-income community members, whether they're low-income homeowners or low-income renters. And so really working to explore the mechanisms of that. Part of the reason we selected the heat pump is because it has a really great return, so to speak, on energy efficiency or climate change, carbon reduction, as well as the fact that RCEA currently has a rebate program for heat pumps. And so potentially, we could dovetail with that program and increase or further leverage those funds to reduce the out-of-pocket costs for customers. An earlier, or I should say later, conversation we have been having that is also within this vein, and it is not included in the staff report or this spreadsheet, is the potential for looking at existing construction and homeowners wanting to electrify their residents. And is there a way that Environmental Services and Building Engineering could partner to further incentivize that shift to electrify existing gas-heated or gas-appliance spaces? So that's something that staff is really, early on in the conversations, and could explore further if that is a pleasure of the council. Moving to the third bullet, so 11C, the Climate Action Plan work that Arcata is working on in partnership with a number of Humboldt County jurisdictions, has thus far been a non-ARPA-funded effort. Looking toward the future, after the Climate Action Plan is adopted, there have been conversations about potentially funding a position that would be housed in RCEA that would take over the monitoring of the Climate Action Plan. So working with different jurisdictions to ensure that they're on track, they're implementing measures, seeking potential funding sources, and really just overseeing implementation efforts and monitoring of that Climate Action Plan. And so while the ARPA funds wouldn't necessarily be able to fund that position or a portion of that position in the long term, it could potentially fund year two or year three, ARPA year two or year three of that position. Earlier this week, at the Energy Committee meeting, committee members were discussing these potential, the potential progress on climate change adaptation measures. And one element that really was left out in terms of ARPA was electrifying transportation. And so I wanted to touch a little bit on that. Again, while it's not in the staff report explicitly or on this spreadsheet explicitly, we could potentially explore options to further the city's efforts toward electrifying fleets or working on electric charging infrastructure. But I did want to speak to that because it did come up at the Energy Committee meeting earlier this week, and I think that it was a very good point. I also wanted to really briefly touch on some of the other non-ARPA energy initiatives that we are currently in process of, just to paint a little bit of that broader picture. So the city is currently working on battery backups for, smaller battery backups for a number of city facilities. We're also working on various alternative transportation opportunities and projects, and as you saw earlier in the agenda, pursuing electric buses and charging infrastructure further. So I wanted to, again, So I wanted to, again, touch on that to paint that broader picture and open it up for council thoughts and comments and areas that make sense to continue to explore or potentially explore that I haven't mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Director Sinkhorn and Deputy Director Benve. Do we have any questions or comments from the council?
That was a really exhaustive presentation, and I really appreciate it. I'm pretty proud of what we decided to put aside for what. It looks great. I don't know if I need to recuse myself from discussing any RCEA-related items, but yeah.
Yeah, I think yes. When we get to the point of actually voting on specific, certainly contracts through RCEA, you're going to feel more comfortable recusing yourself at that point. But in terms of the general discussion of, of where to prioritize ARPA fundings and the types of programs and projects that you want to see, I think you can certainly weigh in on that conversation. And if the city attorney turns her camera on, that means that she wants to tell me something different, but I think we're okay. Did you have anything else to add to that, Nancy?
No, I, I think the, probably the comfort comment is, is the most appropriate. You know, the perception and, and the fact that you, you do work for RCEA. I, I don't think there's a technical conflict of interest, but I think it's, it's wise to keep those two, the two agencies separate.
Thanks, Nancy.
Well, I think we should partner with RCEA as much as we can. No, but I just, I mean, all these projects that you all laid out look super great. I'm especially excited about electrification upgrades and looking at all-electric ordinances, especially considering that we are going to be building a lot of housing in the near future with all of the tours that have been going on with the Gateway Plan and everything like that. We're looking at building a lot of new housing here, and to make sure that it's a priority that that is electrified and has the ability to have access to clean energy, I think is going to be super important. And, and that being said too, I mean, lining up with, yeah, upgrading our city facilities and being able to work with RCEA to do that, I think is a fantastic idea. I also really liked the idea that was mentioned of, yeah, looking at other city facilities outside of City Hall, outside of the community center. I think working with Food Works would be a great idea, especially considering we have so many different micro businesses and kind of small local entrepreneurs working out of there to be able to kind of engage a wider group of, of folks and saying, hey, and, and look, you're, you're cooking all of this with clean energy. We're, we have this in mind, just to kind of engage a wider group of people, I think is a, a great idea. And I mean, direction-wise too, I mean, all, all the projects on, on the list all look great to me as ones that I would support. And I think definitely also, as we're going to see the Climate Action Plan come to us either later this year or very early next year, I think, you know, keeping that in mind as, yeah, we want to be a city that's going to help fund that and help, you know, make this a reality in our county as we, you know, Arcata can do what we want, but also working together, together with the whole county to make sure that climate change is a priority, I think is going to be an important step. And I think stepping up to the plate to be able to use some of these ARPA funds to, to fund somebody to work on the, work through the cap, I think is going to be important as well, so.
I'm very excited about the Community Ambassador Program. I think that's going to be so valuable. I'm also glad that we're starting to fill those positions, police officers and other positions. And I'm really glad that we're getting rid of the planters on H Street between 11th and 9th because they're an eyesore. Thank you.
I, I completely agree. I'm, I'm so proud of, of everything the city's been working on so far and will continue to work on. And I really appreciate the, the very comprehensive update. Do we have any members of the public waiting to comment on this item?
We do. Our first comment will be from Colin. Go ahead, Colin.
Thanks. This is Colin Fisk, and speaking tonight on behalf of RAC, the Redwood Coalition for Climate and Environmental Responsibility. And really appreciate all of the effort that staff has put into this, as well as the council's decision to set aside some of these ARPA funds for, for climate-related purposes. And I'll keep it very brief. Essentially, we support the recommendations that the Energy Committee made, and hope that the city will continue to follow that path. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin.
I see no other public comment on this item.
Okay, are there any last comments from the council? Or does anyone want to give direction, make a motion, or we also, we also don't have to do anything, so.
In the absence of a motion, we're going to keep going down this path.
That sounds great to me.
Yeah. Cool. All right. Great. Thank you. Moving on to new business. Item A, Introduce Ordinance Number 1553, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Arcata, amending the Arcata Municipal Code relating to purchasing procedures. Title II, Administration, Chapter IV, Fiscal Administration. Waive reading of the text and consent to read by title only. Can we please have a staff report from our contracts manager, Danielle Allred?
Hi. Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. The item before you is intended to modernize the city's purchasing policies and procedures, which determine how the city manages materials and supplies purchases and contracts out for professional services and public projects. The last revision of the purchasing ordinance was adopted over 12 years ago, and the proposed new ordinance would update the policies to reflect increases in the cost of materials and contracted services, and to bring the city's purchasing limits more in line with state guidelines for public projects. In recent years, there have been increasing instances where compliance with the current purchasing limits have caused delays in budgeted city projects and diverted staff times meeting those requirements. These ordinance revisions would help improve efficiency in the execution of city purchases and projects that have already been approved through the budget adoption process. One example of this I can give is from May of this year, when the Environmental Services Department needed to purchase several thousand feet of wire to complete the installation of the new oxidation pond aerators. Quotes from local distributors put the purchase within limits that would require approval by the city council. However, due to frequent fluctuations in the costs of construction materials during COVID, vendors were unable to guarantee a quoted price for more than a single day at a time. However, the staff report seeking approval for the purchase needed to be completed two weeks in advance of the council's meeting. So with the proposed limit increases, staff would have been able to order the material sooner, utilizing the best of three quotes received. And then rather than having to wait several weeks for the purchase and ultimately paying a, a higher price for the materials, which is what ultimately happened. The proposed revisions to the ordinance also include an increase in the contract price that the council can approve for professional services without first conducting a request for proposals, or RFP. Some important examples of how this change would benefit the council's goals, including, include creating less constraints on the distribution of ARPA funds through agreements with organizations like Arcata House Partnership and Operation Humboldt's Kuna Project, the city's annual agreement with Bob Gearhart, Doing Businesses, Hydro Resources International, for services with the Arcata Marsh Research Institute is another example. These agencies are uniquely positioned to provide the particular sought-for services. However, those agreements are currently constrained by the monetary limits we have in place, which require that any project greater than $50,000 go through an extensive RFP process. The proposed revisions would raise the council approval limit to $200,000 per project, with projects greater than $200,000 requiring an RFP. With the exception of design-build projects, I'm not aware of any statutory requirements that dictate monetary limits for when an RFP must be used for contracting for professional services. Only the RFPs are a good practice for ensuring that such agreements are awarded in a fair and competitive manner. The limits for professional services contracts imitate those limits established for public projects by the California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act, otherwise known as CUPCA. The city elected to become subject to CUPCA in 2001, as detailed in Article III of the ordinance. Earlier this week, I was contacted by Richard Marks, a local representative for CFAC, who introduced himself to you earlier this evening during public comment period. Richard wished to comment on the revision proposed to Article III, Section E, award of contract, which would increase the purchasing agent's authority to award informally bid projects for public projects from $25,000 to $50,000. And he may wish to share more of his public comment, but in essence, he pointed out that per CUPCA, that limit could actually be $60,000. And I explained that the city had intended to leave a 20% buffer for unforeseen contingency, just to ensure that any contracts awarded in this manner did stay within that $60,000 limit. But he suggested that the council could consider simply using the text of Section 22032 of the Public Contract Code, which lays out those monetary limits per CUPCA, and put that in the ordinance instead. Other revisions to the ordinance would enable the city to utilize more modern methods for accepting bids and disposing of surplus assets over the internet. Earlier this year, as part of a continued declaration of a local emergency related to the coronavirus pandemic, the council authorized staff to utilize an online auction system for disposing of surplus items. This was intended to reduce the amount of in-person interactions and thereby reduce the potential spread of COVID-19, but it also led to a larger auction audience, which ultimately resulted in higher bids and greater revenue for the city. So this proposed revision would formalize this change to enable the use of online processes for receiving bids in the future as well. If the council decides to introduce Ordinance Number 1553 as presented, it would be returned for approval as a consign item at the next council meeting. And if approved, going to affect 30 days afterwards. If the council would like to see any revisions to the ordinance, then a revised ordinance would be prepared and introduced at the council's next meeting, then subsequently adopted at a following meeting. Thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions or comments from the council? Great. That means you did, you did a great job. Thank you. Do we have any members of the public waiting to comment on this item?
We do. Our first commenter, go ahead, Richard.
Yes. Thank you, council, and thank you, Danielle, for the discussion I had with you the other day. This ordinance is way outdated. After 12 years, it's time to look into some of the nuances. And as far as procurements, I was more concerned about Public Works. And of course, my discussion was to try to update maybe just Item E, which is the award of contract. And some of that language is, is outdated, and I just thought to bring it up to Public Contract Code. Adding 22032 with it being the best interest, I think, for the City of Arcata, because it does allow the City of Arcata to do negotiated contracts and purchase orders up to $60,000 without having to do anything but sit at your desk and do that. And then, of course, for any other items between $60,000 and $200,000, there'd be an informal procedure that's set forth in the article for CUPCA, as you said, and you guys do maintain a list of preferred contractors to be on that list. And then, of course, it would still stay pretty normal as far as public projects. More than $200,000 would actually need to have a formal bid or... So anyways, I am just making a suggestion for a friendly amendment to this ordinance to add, for, your Article III, is it? And Item E, and to add that language from, on the, from the California Uniform Construction Cost Accounting Act. And I know this is boring stuff. This is public contract codes and public works, and I'll end it there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
No other public comment for this item.
And council, if you're interested, I do, I can share my screen and kind of show what a revision that Richard is suggesting might look like.
Yes. Yes, please. Thank you.
So this is what we have currently, you know, about, that the purchasing agent can award contracts between, it's currently $25,000, and the proposed, the initial proposed ordinance would move up to $50,000. This is the language essentially from Section 22032 of the, of the CUPCA, is these A, B, and C. So one advantage is if, if we did make this, is that these limits are subject to adjustment by recommendation by the California Uniform Construction Cost Accounting Commission, if approved by the state controller. So if we, if we did adopt this language, it would essentially automatically incorporate any future adjustments. The previous iteration of CUPCA had the limits at, you know, $45,000 to $175,000. They, they were since raised to $60,000 and $200,000. So that's just one item for consideration.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, other comments, or a motion from the council?
Maybe before a motion, I just wanted to give our city attorney a chance if she had any thoughts, because that just kind of came in new today, before you make a recommendation on that.
Yeah, I, the Article III would need a little bit of reformatting, because Article III is specific to just one subsection of the new language that Danielle put on the screen, and it could be updated to be more comprehensive and provide a, a little bit more clarity. I, I actually think it's a good idea. It is very old language, and I think it should be updated. But it, it's not something I want to do on the fly tonight before you introduce it. So it would delay implementing this, you know, moving forward one meeting anyway. We would have it back to you by your next meeting.
Great. Thank you. Comments from the council?
I'm not unopposed to having council go over and reformatting that language and bringing it back to us at a later meeting.
Yeah, and, and it sounds to me, I guess, if we do update it in that sense that it reflects kind of more of the, the state's language and the state's contracts, that it will be more flexible in the future as the state regulations change, then? Okay. Yeah, then I would support probably then, yeah, cleaning up that language and just making it something that can be, be inflexible now, so we can be more flexible in the future, basically, is how I feel about it. Yeah.
Except though that you, you're only limited by the, the scope of the legislative statute right now. And if we lock that in, which you need to do, your flexibility will be defined only by the commission and not by state law. So you don't have unlimited flexibility. The other thing I want to point out is that I know one of the intents, as this ordinance was being drafted by staff, was to bring the limits for acquisition of the supplies, equipment, and services to similar levels to the public works construction. Now, public works, construction projects have to go out through formal bid process. It's very heavily regulated by state law, the, the competitive bid process. The, the acquisition of supplies, materials, and equipment is, is not regulated by those same laws, and the city can set most of the policy around that. And I do know that staff had thought it would be a little easier to implement if they raised those limits. So the limits that are proposed would have lined up with the, the, the limits that were being suggested. So it would be useful if you have any thoughts around the limits for the non-public works side of the, of the ordinance. And I don't know if Danielle wants to speak to this at all.
Yeah, right now, we have it listed up to raising it from $15,000 to $50,000. There, the, the government code basically says that a city will adopt purchasing, purchasing policies and then abide by them. So that limit has quite a range of whatever the council's comfortable with. Some neighboring cities, Santa Rosa, has up to $100,000 can be awarded by the city manager, anything greater than that goes to the council. Reading does something similar. And then the way our municipal code is written, which we did not revise, is that purchases greater than that would go through a more formal bid process, similar to what we do for large public works projects. similar to what we do for large public works projects.
I was just going to say thank you. Go ahead with your comment.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with the limits that were suggested by Danielle.
Yeah, I am as well. I think that we have amazing staff. And this is, you know, it's important that we take these steps to, yeah, for fiscal reasons, financial reasons, and also to move things forward more quickly, everything that Danielle was saying. And so I completely agree. Is that enough direction that we support those changes? And then I will come back?
Yeah, I think that provides direction. I'm just looking quick at Nancy and Danielle, but they're nodding in agreement. All right, so we will update with the recommendation that came forward from the public, and then we'll bring that back in final form for your next meeting for an introduction.
So can I just, sorry, just for clarity, update to move the procurement limits for supplies, equipment, materials to the same limits as public works projects? Is that what I heard from the council? So it would be up to 60,000?
Yes, 60,000. Yes.
Yeah, all right, very good. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, moving on to Item B in new business. Consider adopting Resolution Number 212-29, authorizing a Brownfield cleanup grant application for the Little Lakes Industries property. And can we have a staff report, please, from Director Loyah?
I'm actually going to turn that over to Deputy Director Dart to kick us off. Thank you.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. So the item before you tonight would authorize an application to the Environmental Protection Agency for Brownfield cleanup grant funding for contamination cleanup at the city-owned Little Lakes Industries site. The Little Lakes site is a former mill site located on I Street near the Marsh. It was purchased by the city's redevelopment agency for economic development reuse back in 2001, but it has not been developed due to lack of funding for contamination cleanup. The city previously received a Brownfield Assessment Grant in 2017, and that provided funds for assessment and remedial planning for Brownfield parcels in the city, including the Little Lakes site. This resulted in a site cleanup plan for Little Lakes, which has been approved by the Water Board and the EPA. And the site cleanup plan identified excavation and off-site disposal of the dioxin-impacted soils as the best method for cleanup for the site. So I kind of feel like I've brought this back a couple times, because we did apply for this last year. But we have a new council, so you guys haven't heard about it before. But when we applied last year, we sort of put it together as kind of quickly as possible. We were still in the site cleanup plan stage. And these grants are extremely competitive. So the city was not awarded, which was disappointing. But it gave us a chance to really work on our application more over the last year. And we've been able to work with the Center for Creative Land Recycling, which we've really appreciated. They've given us a lot of insight into making our grant more competitive, which we believe, or application more competitive, which we believe it is at this point. The estimated cost for the site cleanup is approximately 400,000. So we're asking for an up to 400,000 with a 20% cost share if our cost share waiver is not approved. That's what we're asking council to approve in the application. The cost share can be achieved through many different methods. So it can be staff time, it can be equipment, it can be a cash match. There's a lot of ways that we can get that if we're not awarded the cost share waiver. Once the site is cleared of contamination, then the city can begin redevelopment of the property, which is the ultimate goal, and it's something that we've been working towards for a long time. That focus would be job creation, recreational amenities, and habitat restoration. So at this time, staff requests the council accept public comment and authorize the submittal of the EPA cleanup application for Little Lakes Industries site. We would also ask, though, that the council authorize staff to make minor amendments to the application prior to submittal. We're still working on language in a couple areas and finalizing the budget in that not to exceed 400,000, and then editing for some grammatical errors and also some required EPA formatting. There's some formatting that needs to be done to make it the size and exact details that they require. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. And then, any technical questions? David has a lot of history on this site as well, so he can answer questions also.
And just before turning it back to the council, I just wanted to add that the, when I first came onto the city, we had, you know, a lot of properties that had some contamination. There were, we had a TBA grant that targeted Brownfield Assessment Grant that we tried to work out into the community. And I've often heard it said from folks that are, you know, working in this field, that it's really hard to get anyone to take advantage of these. And so I just wanted to acknowledge the work that, you know, staff has done, the leadership role that Jen has taken on to, you know, to move this project forward and get us to a point where we can actually clean up the Little Lakes site. And also, I think the way that we've rolled this program out, we've been able to develop new and deeper relationships with, you know, a lot of our partners, like Baykeeper, who's assisted with the applications that you approved on Consent Calendar, as well as the EPA and the Water Board and some of the regulatory agencies that are, you know, partnering with us to get these sites cleaned up. Without having these sites cleaned up, the projects are just dead on arrival. You just can't do them. And so this is, you know, really important work, and we've really expanded, you know, our activities in City of Arcata to identify and, you know, target cleanups for these contaminated sites. So looking forward to this next application. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions or comments from the council?
I don't have any questions, but thanks, Jennifer and David, for that presentation. I know that we talk a lot about projects that we'd like to put in the Little Lakes area, dog parks and other things. And I think that this is a great project so we can develop that area. So thank you.
I completely agree. Thank you. Do we have any members of the public waiting to comment on this item?
If you'd like to comment on this item and either raise your hand or press star nine if you're on the phone. All right, I see no public comment.
All right. Do we have any final comments or a motion from the council? And I know there was an ask to add an authorization for staff to adjust language a little bit. So does that need to be included in the motion as well?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
You'll authorize, you'll adopt Resolution 212 starting at that point, and then we'll add that in at the end.
Okay, well, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 212-29, authorizing submission of the city's grant application for up to 400,000 dollars in hazardous materials remediation funding to the EPA for cleanup of the Little Lakes Industries site and allow city staff the ability to change and clean up language on said grant. And do we have to include the third point to the authorized 20% cost share? Is that part of it?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, and then also authorize a 20% cost share of up to 80,000 from the city in the form of cash match and staff time if the cost share waiver is not approved.
I second.
Wonderful. We have a motion from Councilmember Schaefer and a second from Councilmember Matthews. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the motion passes. All right, moving on to oral and written communications. This is a time provided for people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. Please raise your hand if you're on the Zoom webinar or press star nine now if you are on the phone line and you would like to make a public comment. Speakers are limited to three minutes at this time. When it's your time for public comment, you will be unmuted and invited to speak. Do we have any public comment?
Yeah, go ahead. Call-in user one, Joanne.
Hello again. This is Joanne Gary. By the way, I've been sitting outside of council chambers, looking at you through a little slot. But I do appreciate being close enough and having the access, at least on my little iPad, to watch and listen. I am calling this time around to wonder when we will be having more hybrid meetings for both council meetings and maybe even committee meetings. I did get an email from Councilmember Schaefer, who indicated that maybe December 1st would be the soon, as soon as we would have an in-person ability to participate at city council meetings. So that is one question. I also do wonder if the council is willing and able to bring up the climate emergency declaration again. And in conjunction with such a declaration, if we are willing and able to pass that declaration again or continue it or renew it, the idea of visibly putting an earth flag on flagpole to indicate our seriousness with this issue and let the public know out on a flagpole that we care about the earth and what is happening and what action we are trying to take. So those two items, I guess I have a question about. And I guess there's other things to talk about, but I will save that for later time. I do hope I get a chance in between meetings to speak with council members individually on some issues. So thank you, and please let me know about the in-person meeting and the emergency, climate emergency declaration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I see no other public comment.
Just in response...
Oh, wait, I see one more public comment.
Sorry, go right ahead.
I'm sorry. Call-in user two? Go ahead, call-in user two. Perfect.
Good evening, council. If you could hear me, this is Oz of Arcata. I'd like to encourage the council to give priority this winter to understanding the condition of the unhoused in our city and the public health threat that it actually is. The Public Safety Task Force is doing some phenomenal work with recommendations that they'll be bringing to you. And I'm hoping that you seriously take them under advisement when you get that body of work before you for your consideration. But what we can do is, first and foremost, is find a legal safe place to sleep at night. When I hang up this phone and lie down in bed, I have no reasonable expectation that 312 people tonight have no safe place to sleep in the city. It's contrary to our community values and our community generosity. It always has been. And the policy that's in place has not worked, is not working, and never will. It's a drain on public safety resources without a tool in the public safety toolbox to give a pedestrian assist to allow a person a safe place to sleep at night. It's very simple. The policy's broke. And we have to start from the ground up, because they're sleeping on the ground tonight. Thank you for your consideration on that matter. And the second matter tonight is, a couple of city council meetings back, there was, I think it was $37,000 appropriated for police training. And I hope that we can get some progress reports on this training for the public record. Maybe the chief could advise and give us some more updated information as the winter goes, so that we can have a more professionally trained force, more able to handle the needs that arise and be able to make that on-call decision to put the human element back into public safety and policing. Very important to us, because we know that it doesn't take much to have a situation go awry very quickly. And it's up to us to make sure that we are doing procedurally everything that we can to keep officers safe at the same time, take care of the situation as it arises. Thank you so much, council. Appreciate all you're doing, and we hope to get back in live meetings as soon as possible. And good night.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else waiting to make public comment?
All right, I see no more public comment.
Okay, thank you. Now, we are moving on to council and staff reports. May we please have an update on the status of the safe parking program from the city manager?
Yeah, just a quick update for you this evening. Arcata House Partnership has continued to work with the city on putting together a proposal. They are at a point where, from an operational standpoint, they've got a strategy, and their board has approved a concept for them to be able to operate the program within the budget that was approved by the council. We are in the process of trying to finalize a site. And we are, at this point, we still have a couple of city sites that we're working through, but we do also have one additional private property site that we're going to be visiting, hopefully, this week, if not early next week, and try to finalize a recommendation on that for you. Since we've had a fun time talking about purchasing policies, I just want to bring up that this is probably one of the perfect examples. You know, you had at least two things, and potentially three, with Community Ambassador, depending on the direction that that goes. But the contract for KUNA and the contracts for Arcata House Partnership, both were well below, or well above what our current purchasing limits are. With the action that you took tonight, I'm feeling confident that we'll be able to move forward with the KUNA contract without a request for proposals, formal. But for this one, still, we're looking at, you know, $480,000. So we will still be going out for some level of requests for proposals. But we did also want to make sure that we'd have a proposal coming in, so get, you know, somebody ready enough to be able to submit a proposal. So we'll work through that process as well. But really, I think the big piece is to finalize the location. And I think we're getting close. So that's good. Update on that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, City Manager Deemer. Item B, update from Deputy Director of Environmental Services, Community Services, Emily Benvee on the Alder Grove Marsh Restoration Pilot Project.
Sure. So I am going to share my screen. I have a PowerPoint prepared. And I always have trouble between presenter mode and slideshow view, so bear with me just one second. Okay, are you seeing the... Good, it looks like you're seeing the slideshow mode, not presenter mode. Great. So Alder Grove Marsh Restoration Project is a project that Environmental Services staff recently completed, which was funded by U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service Coastal Partnership. Approximately a $50,000 project. And I'm really excited to share with you tonight. This photo you're seeing right here is a great before photo of what Alder Grove Marsh looked like in early October, before this project was implemented. So to start out, I wanted to share some history of how Alder Grove Marsh came to be. Alder Grove Marsh currently is an approximately 10-acre wetland complex on the historically North Fork of James Creek and, or on North Fork of James Creek and historic Mad River floodplain. Prior to its construction, it was agricultural land. In roughly 1941, so I have this time series for you. In roughly 1941, so I have this time series for you. You'll see in 1958, the area became a log-holding pond. And then by 1988, or thereabouts, the 10-acre marsh currently known as Alder Grove Marsh came into existence. So this marsh was created in the, I believe, early 80s, and its construction was to help offset some of the impacts of the industrialization of the Alder Grove area, as well as offsetting some of the wetland loss. It is locally renowned as excellent migratory bird habitat, and it's also host to native amphibians and previously more, currently very few aquatic species. So you can see here in 2003, what was the open water habitat, which, for context, I'll go back one slide. This open water represents about three acres, and then the remainder is, is a mix of riparian habitat, essentially, and islands. So moving forward in 2003, you can see that the open water started to fill in. In 2017, it's, it's, for all intents and purposes, completely filled in with vegetation. And so what has happened over time is that an invasive species, reed canary grass, had colonized much of the area, as well as a number of other invasive species. But reed canary graph, reed canary grass has been known to really alter Martian wetland areas. It becomes really monotypic. It's great at trapping sediment and starting to accrete and filling in and just taking over for all intents and purposes. And so as that reed canary grass has started to dominate the marsh, cattails, which are not invasive, but they are very dominating, they started to encroach further and further because cattails need shallower water. And so the reed canary grass has filled in, made the marsh shallower, the cattails encroach. And so the result has been essentially no open, or the result was essentially no open water habitat, which pushed out a lot of the biodiversity that we were seeing. So it created an environment where there was really, really low dissolved oxygen. So where there used to be cutthroat trout, there really aren't anymore. The amphibian habitat has been greatly diminished. And while there's still pretty solid migratory songbird habitat, it's still diminished over time since there was that previous more diverse habitat complex of open water, as well as some riparian areas. So that's painting the picture of the before. As I mentioned, the project was about $50,000, so a relatively small-scale grant. And it's really been a pilot project to restore about half an acre of the open water habitat to understand construction techniques that work and have a better understanding of scope and really cost and what it would take to further restore the remainder of that marsh. A real objective of the project has been to increase the biodiversity and functional habitat. Always fun to include our construction photos. So to give you a brief explanation of construction, we contracted with Wallace Structures, who had a long-reached excavator, which is quite a huge excavator. And so it was able to reach out into the marsh and basically weed. It's like very large-scale weeding the reed canary grass, as well as some of the cattails, to start to restore that open water habitat. Additionally, we had an airboat that we were able to go out and get some of those harder-to-access places to continue to clear. City staff partnered. We had our streets crew running the dump truck and our natural resources crew. After the vegetation removal was completed, our natural resources crew restored and improved the public walking trail that is adjacent to the marsh, as well as installed some best management practices. So the long-term hope is that we can really start to encourage a return of public use of this space, potentially install a picnic table, a bench, an interpretive sign, and really, really, yeah, restore a lot of that recreation, as well as habitat of this area. In the bottom right, you will see someone in a vest. That was our onsite biologist. So we had a biological monitor to ensure that during this work, species were minimally impacted. So here, you can see the before and afters. The left-hand side is the marsh before, and that real grassy-looking vegetation is the reed canary grass, as you can see, totally filled in the open water habitat. And on the right-hand side is the after. Immediately after construction, we have that nice open habitat restored. So next steps, as I mentioned, we're hoping to do some native planting to restore some of the riparian that was impacted by construction, hoping to improve public access, interpretive opportunities, and start to consider larger scope for future potential broader-scale restoration project of the area. And I'm happy to answer any questions and really appreciate taking the time to learn about this exciting restoration project. Thank you.
Thank you so much. This is really exciting. Seeing the before and after was also very fun. So thank you for that. Do we have any questions?
Just thank you. It's also fun to just, I don't know, share and see pictures of a part of Arcata I don't think a lot of people get out to and see very much. So it's nice to know that, you know, the path is cleared up and, you know, looking forward to having picnic tables and information. Very cool. So thank you guys so much.
Absolutely. And I should have prefaced that Alder Grove Marsh is located on Alder Grove Road at the corner of Erickson Way. And so it's really close to a lot of business uses. And so hopefully, a lot of folks will be able to come out and enjoy that space on their lunch breaks, et cetera. So, yeah, exciting stuff.
That's really wonderful. Thank you so much. All right, do, next item would be other council and staff reports. Are there any other staff updates?
I just wanted to mention that next Wednesday, November 24th, there will be pre-made holiday meals this year that will be given away from Arcata House Partnership at the Annex near the Transit Center. So if there are families or individuals that are in need of a pre-made holiday meal, we won't be doing in-person gathering free holiday meal for the community this year because of COVID-19 precautions still, but there will be pre-made holiday meals released on the 24th from 12 to 5:00.
Thank you for that update, and thank you, Arcata House Partnership, for providing that to our community. Are there any other staff updates? All right, any council member updates?
I would like to just state or ask if this is an appropriate time to talk about if we are okay with the public returning to our meetings. I know I've talked about it with City Manager Deemer. I haven't really talked about it with any other council members. We are missing our mayor tonight and other council members, so it might not be the best night to maybe bring this discussion forth. But I don't know, just putting my hat in the ring. I feel comfortable being masked and distanced in this room. I think it's, it's possible to slowly allow our public back, though we do have a robust hybrid option as well, and just make that known to the public, you know, that that option still exists, that you can attend virtually still as well. But, yeah, just wanted to put that opinion out there.
I did do some quick survey work, just to let the council know. Eureka has gone back to kind of a soft, in-person hybrid opening of meetings. The county, it sounds like Fortuna, Riodell, are all going to be looking at probably in the new year, going back to sort of in-person/hybrid meetings. So it's sort of what the county, other places in the county stand right now. Can we comment? Can we talk about it? You know, I have never been a council member and have had an in-person meeting, so of course, I'm really looking forward to, you know, talking in front of people. And still, you know, the vaccination rate in Humboldt considers, continues to be really low. And I know we, there is talk of a winter surge, and I know that people have traveling plans over the Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays. I feel like it would be probably the most prudent for us to wait until the first meeting of the new year. I would be comfortable with that.
I would agree that I'm leaning more towards waiting till the new year. I think because of winter travel and, and all of that, as well as our, our low vaccination rate, I do have some concerns that with a winter surge, you know, I mean, unfortunately, and I hate to say it, but maybe the first meeting in, in January would be when we start to see that surge, that it would just be, in my opinion, irresponsible to invite folks into a closed space. Even if we are masked, we can't guarantee anything. So I would say looking more towards the second meeting in January or the first meeting in February. I, I too, would really love to get back to in-person. I have gotten to have one, one meeting in person. I think we had one in-person meeting, and it was really great. And I loved having you all here. So I really am looking forward to it. But I also am, I'm thinking very public health-minded and want to ensure the, the safety and the health of our community as well.
I will share those sentiments with the mayor, and we'll probably continue that discussion and our kind of dates of future meetings. And, you know, we'll start to gear up and plan. And I'll get some more confirmation as to, from the public health officer. There was a period, and I think some of that has changed, but just within the last couple of weeks, about, they were really discouraging in-person meetings, but it sounds like they're getting ready to loosen that, at least by the new year also.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Schaefer, for bringing this conversation up. I know folks are really ready to get back and be with us, and we're ready to have you back, too. So I appreciate you bringing up this important conversation, too. Thank you. Are there any other council member updates?
I don't have any updates, but I just want to wish everybody a safe and happy Thanksgiving holidays. If you travel, take precautions, be safe, and see you in December.
All right, well, thank you. I am going to use the gavel because I really, really wanted to.